Okay, I will call this meeting of the Lancaster Select Board Special Meeting for Tuesday, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. At six oh two P M. There will be a roll call. Mister Allison. Mister Gifford.
Here.
Mister Carrigan's here. Okay, reminder, this is being recorded. And I suppose maybe broadcast, I don't know what they do with our Zoom only meetings, but maybe broadcasts through our partners at Sterling Lancaster Community Television, so we thank them. All right, let's get right into the agenda. First item on the agenda is review and take action on the meeting minutes of our June third meeting. Is there a motion?
I did know, I did note a couple of, or at least one error, and I would recommend that we defer till next meeting so we can get the errors corrected.
Well, you have to tell us what the errors are.
Okay, so first on page three, it stated Mister Gifford stated that the state recommends a five to ten year outlook, and I believe I stated a three to five year outlook. I've not had time to review the video on that. Perhaps more importantly, on top of page five, on appointing, this is on the section about appointing members to the Board of Appeals. It correctly includes a motion by Mister Allison to appoint, I don't, the particular Board of Appeals members. And then incorrectly proceeds to include the erroneous line, Mister Allison moved to appoint Frank Streeter to the Affordable Housing Trust for a position to expire June thirty. And so forth. So essentially, it conflates, it, it, it repeats something from an earlier motion.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we can make that, that's a clerical correction that can be made that doesn't affect the substance of it. I wouldn't say erroneous, I would just say, uh, there's a clerical mistake. The first one, we can definitely check the tape, so if there's a any, if you would like to delay approving these until the next meeting, that's perfectly fine.
I, I, I'm okay with moving ahead if it can be corrected after the fact.
Um, I can't correct what they're saying is your words without checking it, because when they do the meeting minutes, they take it from the transcript. So I will refer that back to Kathy and have her check it out.
Right, why don't we kick the approval to the next, uh, meeting, and then we can make that clerical correction and then check to see the accuracy on the first point.
Very good.
Okay, uh, next up is public comment. Usually I say we go to the people in the room first, but we're not in the room, so. We will go online first, of course, and only, and if you wish to be heard, please put your virtual hand up, don't wave your hand. And you'll be recognized for two minutes. I will wave my hand when you have one minute to go. Uh, and please, at the beginning, um, state your name and your address. So, and anybody wish to be heard in public comment? Okay, uh, it is a small enough room for me to determine that nobody wants to be heard, so we will move on. Public comment is closed. Um, we have no scheduled appearances, our public hearings, we have no budget administration and policy, um, uh, updates. We are going to move into appointments. Uh, first, I want to thank my colleagues and Kate and the town staff for moving this meeting. Um, I had an unavoidable travel conflict that I would have been on an airplane during the meeting when we were supposed to have it last week, so my apologies for, um, for anything, uh, any inconvenience it may have caused people. Um, all right, appointments. So we have a number of them, we have uh, two that are, um, uncontested and recommended, um, one for Tax Fairness Committee. And one for Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, and then we have the Community Preservation, um, two seats for at-large, um, residents, uh, and we have six folks who've expressed interest, that is, we've invited them all, if they're able to make it, um, uh, tonight to, um, to say a few words about their candidacy. That does not necessarily impact whether or not they'd get on, if they're here or not, but just wanted to make sure I clarified that. So why don't we take, uh, if we are okay, if my board members are okay with this, I'd like to entertain a motion on the Affordable Housing Trust appointment.
I move to appoint Deb Williams to the Affordable Housing Trust term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty six.
So, a second.
Uh, for purposes of discussion, I will second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I'm guessing.
Yes, yes, uh, so in this case, I don't have an issue because Deb Williams is repeating, uh, but for, uh, I just wanted to get this in early before we get to others. According to our policies, uh, this would be chapter three oh four, section, or, yeah, chapter three oh four, section twenty E.
Sure, yep.
All candidates seeking appointment for the first time to a position self shall submit a short written stating or statement or resume. This statement slash resume shall be included in the board agenda packet mailed in advance of the meeting. Uh, then it goes on to say, the board may consider reappointments to positions at their pleasure. So this is a reappointment, which I think certainly qualifies, uh, the state, the, uh, the policy goes on to state a statement slash resume will only be requested from a candidate seeking reappointment by specific request of a member of the board. So we do not have, well, okay, let me just focus on this particular motion. This particular motion, I think qualifies, no need for a resume or statement, because it's a reappointment.
Okay, so can we get this one out of the way then?
Yes, we can get this one out of the way, yep.
So your motions, your, your discussion is not relevant to this, this, uh, appointment. So, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, aye. Uh, we thank Deb for her willingness to continue to serve. Um, uh, we certainly can continue your conversation now if you'd like, or would you like this to, um, boil over into, um, the Roy Rezak Tax Fairness Committee?
I move to appoint Roy Rezak as the FinCom Representative to the Tax Fairness Committee.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Gifford.
Aye.
And Mister Carrigan, aye. Um, community preservation. Now, I will say, Ralph, I appreciate you raising that, um. All of the folks, at least to my knowledge, have sent in either letters indicating their interest in serving, uh, or are here to present something, uh, more. Are you suggesting that we don't consider this appointment at this time?
Well, I remember from many years of practice that it was routine to provide, uh, letters or resume to the Select Board, and last time I had indicated I was comfortable moving ahead with reappointments and had requested, uh, letters or resumes for, from the new members. We went ahead nonetheless last time.
Yeah.
Um, I really.
I guess I'm asking what you're looking for this time.
I, I, I'm looking for, uh, that, that, those letters or, I'm looking per our policy. Letters or resumes, preferably resumes, because I don't know everybody, and it would be helpful to have, uh, uh, written descriptions that I could consider in advance, prepare advanced questions.
Right.
Uh, do the kind of due diligence that would.
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And this is him being cheeky, but did, is this something that occurred to you as we were dialing into this Zoom?
No, actually, you may recall at our last.
Did you raise it? Did, did you, did you email Kate and ask for resumes or letters, uh, and see me before this?
I did not raise, what I did was, uh, earlier, uh, this evening, as I was going going through the, uh, packet.
Yeah.
Um, and I didn't see that, then I thought, you know.
The packet from last Thursday.
Uh, yes, and, uh, and I said, I'm going to go to the policy, so I read the policy or earlier this evening, literally within, uh, about an hour before this meeting.
Okay, so I, I would just suggest, um, I, I'd like to, I guess I'd like to know what you'd like to do, because there's been plenty of time to ask what you're asking for. If you look at the packet just before the meeting and realize there's something not in it, um, it's incumbent on members to look at their packet when they get it, if they have any questions or clarifications to reach out to myself, uh, and Kate to get that clarification. Um, if you would be more comfortable with us tabling one more time, the appointment that we moved from the last one, um, then, um, you know, that's, well, you can have that conversation as a board. I just want to get some guidance from you as to what you're looking to do.
Yeah. I would be more comfortable.
Tabling this again.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So that we can follow our, our, our policies.
Our policy, our policy is also to, well, to come to the meeting prepared. Uh, and it seems you looked at yourself, which is fine, you can look at them whenever you want, but it's when you look at it just before a meeting, and then these folks have been asked to come back, um, from weeks ago when we last met, um, and it's, it seems to me unfair, uh, not to give them an opportunity to speak to us, but, um, I guess we can throw it open to a discussion. You, so are you making a motion that we table the appointment of the, uh, Community Preservation Act?
So moved.
Okay. Um, is there a second?
So, so Mister Chair, I, I'm unsure whether to second this or not, um, so on one hand, I wanna, wanna support.
Second for the purpose of discussion if you'd like. Or, or not, or just not second?
Sure, second.
Second.
Um, oh yeah, so we can have a discussion about the motion, which is to, um, table again the Community Preservation Act, uh, appointments. Um, I guess Ralph, make your case on why you'd like us to table.
Uh, so we have multiple applicants, uh, several of whom are new, and I, and we don't have information, uh, about them. Um, and I know this is going to be a, an important consideration. Uh, that's number one. Number two, our, uh, approved, uh, policy are, you know, as I said, I referred to chapter, uh, three oh four, section twenty E, all candidate, I don't, I won't reread it. But it's very clear, we're not following that policy, I would like to follow that policy.
Would you like, okay, so you would like, and what does it say in that policy, um, if we don't? So we can't force someone to get, give us a resume. You're saying that if someone does not have a resume, if they've not put one together for themselves, they cannot be on a board or commission in Lancaster.
Uh, I don't know if you're trying to, uh.
When was the one, yeah, go ahead, sorry, answer the question.
Are, are you, are you disputing the policy, or are you disputing?
No, I'm asking you a question. I'm asking you, I'm asking you a question.
Yes. Uh, I'm sorry, I missed, I thought you were disputing the policy, so we, please rephrase the question.
I'm, I'll ask it exactly the same way. Are you saying that if someone does not have a resume, they shouldn't be appointed to a board or commission in Lancaster? It also says male things, which we don't do that anymore. There are a lot of parts of our policies that are outdated, which we should definitely tackle.
Uh, I, well, okay, I'm looking at the language of the policy, all candidate.
I'm asking what your opinion is as a board member. We are a body of three, would you say that if you don't have a resume, shouldn't be appointed?
If, uh, it would certainly affect my considerations if they do not submit a resume, uh, and I don't happen to be aware of their qualifications, uh, that would.
That's why we have them here. We have them come in and present their qualifications and why they want to serve on the board.
Right.
And you get a chance to ask them any question you'd like.
And as I said, as I said previously, uh, if those were included in the packet, uh, then that would enable members to do further research and prepare questions and that sort of thing. So it's a little difficult to prepare the questions without the, uh, without the resumes. In my experience in hiring people, uh, you always have a resume, you use a resume to try to.
Sure, I get that. They're citizens volunteering for something. I'm not hiring them to give them money. Um, I've hired a lot of people myself, as you have, um. They're citizens trying to volunteer to serve the town. And for a second time, you're asking us to kick their appointment to another meeting. So I just want to understand, um, exactly, that's just, that's a resume or that's it?
I think it's good practice, it's outlined in our, uh.
Okay, I hear the policy, I get it, I get it. Um, uh, okay, um, Jason, do you have any comments? Or debate in this, during this debate and discussion on the motion?
I do. So I can appreciate, um, members of the board want to follow the process. I get that, I'm a process person, I understand the need for that. Uh, but I do believe as a board, we need to accept that we are, we will not govern, um, by, you know, that document, right? That is not a black and white document, which is, is how Lancaster, it's not prescriptive on, on how Lancaster will or will not be governed, we will be successful in that manner. Um, so that's part one. Uh, part two is that's, that's a, a select board policies and procedures. And, and if this board desires things from candidates, then this board needs to reach out to those candidates. Um, and I, and I think that, that has to be said, so if, if, if we want things, if, if members of this board want things, they need to go ask for them. Because I can guarantee you no residents are reading that. Um, next is, I, I'm prepared to move today. Um, that's my opinion. I get the policy and procedures, but for every person that's applying, I know them, spoken to them, some of them I've spoken to at length recently. So I have no qualms about moving forward, uh, with what we need to today. Um, I think that in, in, in closing, um, if, if we are going to expect people to do a lot of work to apply for boards and committees, um, then we're not going to get the answer, participation that we want from residents. I believe it's our uh, role to make it as easy as possible for people to participate, and this feels like a hurdle. And I'd be all for asking to change the policies and procedures if, if that's what's necessary, but I, I think it's a mistake for this board to, to make demands like this, black and white demands of residents, um, when we already have so many, um, committees that are not filled, so that's, that's my position, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything further, Ralph?
Uh, I wasn't aware that these, uh, that these policies were just merely suggestions, uh, that's news to me.
Okay, um, anything further on this motion?
Yeah, I, I don't, Ralph, I don't really understand your statement, um, they're not laws. No one's going to jail. Um, we, we have to be professionals here, we have to decide, um, what, what is right for the town, and, and one way to do that is if something doesn't pass the sniff test like this, then we as a board can, can be leaders and ask for a change, and if, and if that's what's needed, that makes sense. Um, because I, I, I think that would be an archaic, um, demand, uh, for volunteers, that would be my opinion right now. So I'm all for us as a board, um, or for example, for you, Ralph, if you want to go ahead and propose a change to the Select Board policies and procedures, unless you believe that's what's necessary. But, but that would be, that would be my position, um, whereas, whereas we'd love to follow, uh, the procedures, but we gotta be, we gotta be leaders here.
It seems to me that, sorry.
No, go ahead.
It seems to me that the, these policies and procedures were, uh, they evolved over time out of experience, they were well considered, and, uh.
Do you know when, when that policy was added to the policy and procedure?
Uh, you know, I don't know when that particular policy was.
I would just suggest that we don't make claims that this was well thought out and, and debated, we don't, we don't know that. So I just want to leave people with the impression that this board.
When I first became involved in town government decades ago, it was, uh, in a, an appointed position. And at that time, this was of course before internet or any of that, I was required to submit a resume and a letter of interest that did get included with the Select Board, that was, you know, thirty or so years ago. Uh, and I've seen that happen many times since then, so it seems to me that what has changed is that we are not following what has been probably at least decades of good practice.
No, decades of good practice, no, 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 it's been decades of the policy.
Yes.
So, so, so that, uh, you know, if, if that's a fault of mine to have not been explicit in following that specific, um, line item, I haven't been following that light on, line item on the, on the four years on this board, so, so it's, I don't want the case to be said that today we're deciding not to follow them. I can tell you, we have not been following them by choice, right? Like, because that's how the town needs to be run today, not thirty years ago, but today, with empty boards and committees.
It's, it's worth noting, I did serve on this board twenty-five years ago, uh, and, uh, we, we maybe occasionally got a resume and a letter, but it was not a hard and fast rule either. Um, back then, so, um, and some people do submit resumes with their letters of interest, but, um, as we've discussed many, many times at these meetings, it is very difficult to get people to volunteer to do anything. Um, and so we are trying to, um, deal with the, uh, modern day Lancaster that we have, not, um, the one from the days of yesteryear. So, um, I think we have, uh, debated this motion, uh.
Yeah, I, one more, one more quick thing before I vote, because I, I know how I'm gonna vote, and, and my ask of this board, and my ask to the teammates is if we want things from the residents, we have to ask them, we have to ask them way far ahead of time. If any individual on this board wants something from a resident, they have to go ask for it, because we can't bring them on. All I'm seeing is if this gets voted down, that people are gonna be like, this is such a waste of my time. That's gonna be the message, that, that this board can't even figure out how to get going. So if there's, I, I don't need anything today, I'm ready to vote, but if one of my teammates wants to wait, I get it, and I, and I will wait, but we have to ask ourselves what message are we sending to our volunteers? Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, there is a motion and that has been seconded on the floor to table the appointment to the Community Preservation Commission, uh, to our next meeting. Um, I, well, okay, that's, that's, that was the motion that was made, so I'm not gonna read more into that. Um, did I, um, describe your motion properly, Ralph?
It is to table, yes.
Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, I, I will vote, um, no, but, um, the ayes have it. Um, so we will table, uh, the appointment of Community Preservation. Commission to the next meeting. Um, okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is licenses and permits.
I move to, um, I move to approve application for special one-day liquor license, all alcohol event annual Bolton Fair, location Lancaster Fairground, three one eight seven Bridge Road, date and time, August ninth to eleventh, twenty twenty-four, nine A M to ten P M, storage day, August eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Alls. Is there a discussion about this? Go ahead.
Yes, do we periodically review the, uh, whether there are any increased security?
So every one of these has to go before the Public Safety Commission, like the, they, um, uh, well, the chief is on here somewhere, um, yeah. Um, so it wouldn't get to this phase in the process if it hadn't met the requirements to get to us.
Right, my, my, where I was about to go was to ask, uh, based on our experience, now that we've been doing this for a number of years, uh, does this result in any increased cost to us for security, uh, do we?
Well, I'll ask the chief to answer, but well, I, I actually can't ask the chief to answer because we're in the middle of a motion. Um, my, my assumption is no, um, that it does not add increase, because if it did, we would know about it. Um, but, uh, and I'm watching, even though he can't say anything, I'm watching the commissioner shake his head on the no new costs and nod on, yes, so, uh, I believe I've given you the right information.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and thank you, Commish. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Discussion, uh, discussion.
Sorry, more discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, um, if, there's opportunity for all of us to, you know, if we have questions about these applications to, to get them answered ahead of time, someone like Kate um, and her staff can get, get all these answered, um, ahead of time, um, so, because I, I, I don't have the answer to that, I rely on, I rely on our, our paid town staff to get those answers.
Um, I will add to that, that I frequently will, um, ask Kate about a different project or whatnot in the, uh, in the license, um, part of our agenda. Um, license and permit part, so, um, okay, any further discussion on the application for the special one-day liquor license? All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan. Next item on the agenda.
I move to approve application for public amusement license, weekdays and Sunday, event annual, annual Bolton Fair. Location, the Lancaster Fairgrounds, three one eight seven Bridge Road, date and time, Friday, August ninth, twenty twenty-four, from noon to ten P M. Saturday, August tenth, twenty twenty-four, from nine A M to ten P M, and Sunday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-four, from nine A M to nine P M.
Second. Uh, Steve, you're muted.
Oh, sorry, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, aye. Okay, next.
I'm, I move to approve application for public amusement license, weekdays and Sunday, event based at chapter A T C A Antique Truck Show. Location, the Lancaster Fairgrounds, three one eight seven Bridge Road, date and time, Saturday, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, and Sunday, August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, from eight A M to four P M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
And Mister Carrigan, aye.
I move to approve the application for public amusement license on Sundays, event tie rods car show, location, the Lancaster Fairgrounds, three one eight seven Bridge Road, date and time, Sunday, September eighth, twenty twenty-four, from nine A M to four P M.
Is there a second?
Second, second.
Okay, um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, aye. Next.
I, I move to approve application for special one-day liquor license, all alcohol, fin, tie rods, car show, Bolton Fair. Location, the Lancaster Fairgrounds, three one eight seven Bridge Road, date and time, Sunday, September eighth, twenty twenty-four, from nine A M to four P M. Storage days, September sixth and seventh, twenty twenty-four.
So, second. Okay, all those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, aye.
I move to approve application for public amusement license on Sundays, event Lancaster Brazilian Seventh Day Adventist Amazon Junior Adventures Touch a Truck Health Fair, location three five seven Sterling Road, Lancaster, date and time, Sunday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, from ten A M to four P M.
Sure, second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, aye.
I move to approve applications for use of the Town Green and Gazebro Fair Memorial Library, bekeeping, presentation and candle making to be held on eight, six, twenty-four, from three P M to four thirty P M, their memorial library, Australian music, performance, education, to be held on eight, fourteen, twenty twenty-four, from six P M to seven P M.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mister Gifford.
Aye.
Mister Allison.
Aye.
Mister Carrigan, aye. Uh, all right, uh, Lini, yeah, I see, so I, I see you, I had to have the agenda up that was blocking that side of the screen, so I saw your hand up, you have a question. You're muted.
Yeah, I have a question and a couple of comments.
We, 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 we had, we had public comment earlier, but you can ask.
No, because this pertains to the appointments to the.
So, so I will, I will remind you, you're invited to speak at this meeting at the best of the board, so.
May I, may I make some?
I will allow you to ask a question. Go ahead.
Okay, the question is, um, since resumes, um, are needed, um, how it would be helpful for the candidates applying to know how much resume? Do we want to go back to where we attended school and our, our work experience, or would it be just sufficient, what's, um, pertinent to the Community Preservation Committee?
So I will say this, that I don't, um, I am, and I think I, I don't want to speak from Mister Allison, but, uh, I was ready to move forward today. Um, so as far as I'm concerned, I have the information I need, and I look forward to hearing from the candidates. Um, so that would be a question I think you'd have to ask Mister Gifford, I'll yield to him to answer, but I'm, I, as Chair of this board, um, I don't intend to require folks, uh, to jump over another hurdle, uh, to be considered by this, uh, board, I believe, sending in their interest to us, as they all have, and then showing up here or emailing something, um, uh, as people have busy. Uh, as people have busy lives is sufficient, but, um, I suppose if you do have a resume related question, Ralph, um, do you, how far would you like, um, any candidate who wishes to submit a resume, um, to go back? Because it's a very, very question. My resume would be very, I jumped around a bit during my career. So if I went back to the Lancaster Town Beach, that would take us back a long time.
I'm looking for experience relevant to the job in question. Uh, that could include any certainly any government experience could be, could be helpful, is not certainly required. But, uh, knowledge of or, or strong interest in community preservation, uh, experience with that. Anything that would be relevant that would, uh, help, would suggest that a person has the abilities or capabilities to do a great job.
Okay.
I'm looking for going all the way back to, you know, high school or college diploma and that kind of stuff.
So I will just say to the candidates, and I, I, I felt like you had a follow-up question, so I'm definitely gonna go back to you. Uh, relevant experience is somewhat subjective, so, um, uh, and, you know, like you, you, you can, you will decide, Ralph, what you think is relevant to you to make a decision about appointment that might be drastically different than me. So it's, uh, it is a standard that's going to be difficult for folks to meet, but Lenia?
Um, also, this, um, the, the, my term and Margo's term is up on the thirtieth, which will leave the Community Preservation Committee without a quorum. Because Historic also needs to appoint somebody as well as Recreation. So this committee is dead in the water until appointments are made. And it would be very helpful to get those two boards, Rec and Historic, to put forth recommendations on who those committees or, uh, commissions want to put forward.
That's a good flag and Kate and I can communicate to their chairs to see if they can submit those, um, so that we can get everything buttoned up as early as possible.
And the last comment or question would be, I emailed a, a quick experience and, you know, qualifications yesterday morning. And I received no response. So I think it would also be helpful if people sending things in, the email got a response, so they know it was received.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna let the staff respond to what they can.
I, I sent it to all three select board members.
So you're, you're asking me to respond to every email I get?
Um, it, it could be very simple. Respond all.
It could be. Yeah, it could be. Yep.
Well, if, if, yes, okay. Thank you for letting me speak.
Appreciate it. Um, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda, um, communications. Uh, so we have our next select board meeting, which will be, uh, one day after the terms expire on July the first, six PM, on Monday, July first, at six PM. Uh, just want to, then I guess the next, am I missing anything else, Kate? Or we?
Point, point of order.
Mm-hmm. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't see, I don't see new business on here and, and I would like to, um, introduce new business that was not anticipated by you because it happened to me.
Uh, I believe that's, I mean, new bit, the, the ability to submit for a new business means that it could not be foreseeable at the time of the agenda. So if this is not foreseeable at the time the agenda was developed.
Oh, oh, no, it couldn't have been. No, no kidding. Yep, I would like to make a motion to authorize Town Administrator Kate Hodges to review the language surrounding applications for boards and committees to insurance relevance in twenty twenty-four going forward.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
So what I'm looking for here is I'm sure if Kate takes a little bit of time, just thinks about like what would be applicable, what would be in the best interest of people applying today, just put a proposal together for the board, put it in front of us and we can vote on it and we can decide if we want to change the current language, which as stated tonight in open session, I'm very much a proponent of.
That is, um, you're, you're, uh, being more generous than I am because I was going to, um, suggest that we just get rid of the, the resume requirements. Um, but, uh, I suppose a thorough looking, because Kate has all kinds of free time. Um, we can, uh, we can get some recommendations on that. But, um, any further discussion?
I'll quickly add, from an open meeting law perspective, uh, this board is willing, is capable of deliberating, not, I'm sorry. As with respect to open meeting law, this board is capable of discussing procedure. So if any board member has a procedure question with regards to appointments and things that they may or may not have, um, I would encourage every board member to send that out and far in advance as possible.
Agreed. Okay, anything further, um, on, uh, this motion?
Could you repeat the motion, please?
The motion is to, well, the gist is to allow Kate um, to review that particular chapter of our policies and procedures relative to requirements for people to be appointed um, to boards and commissions by the select board. Did I summarize it well?
Yes, just to have a, have a proposal that, so the motion is to authorize Kate Hodges to, uh, review the current language about board appointments, um, and its relevancy for twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Gifford?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Kate, add that to your three-foot-high to-do list. Um, all right. Is there a motion? We have executive session coming up. Is there a motion?
I move to enter executive session. The Lancaster Select Board will meet in an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty A, twenty-one A, for the following purpose. I, purpose two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Fire Department, and I, I excuse me, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of Lancaster Historical Society pursuant to section twenty-one, A, three, as the chairs to determine that discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect of the town's litigation position and not to reconvene in open session thereafter.
Second. You're muted again, Steve.
Sorry, I thought the dog was gonna bark at a delivery person. Um, all right, um, all those in favor of going into executive session and not returning to open session afterwards, signify by saying aye, Mr. Gifford.
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. We are going to executive session.